For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting on April 1st, 2019. Call the order please.
Hest, here. Johnson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Noah?
Here.
Mr. Rice for the pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in every event, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any modifications to the agenda this evening? Changes? Approval of the minutes for open session and closed session of March 18th, 2019. Oh, sorry. We're in a new room, I don't know what to say. Were there any issues or changes with that as well?
No.
Citizens appearing before council on agenda, nine agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. If you'd like to do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our record. This is the only time during tonight's meeting that you are allowed to address counsel.
Mike Kalaszewski, 7066 Locom Road, your Assistant Building Official. Just wanted to bring counsel up to date on our mercury spill at City Hall. The representative from IAC Indoor Air Quality was here today. Got here this afternoon and did an air monitoring. The company's action level is, their viewpoint is .5 micrograms per metric cubic foot. Anyhow, it's all metrics. So their action level's .5. The standard action level is 1.0. And testing the first floor and the second floor, we were between .8 and 1.2, 1.3. We had a couple higher readings in between then, but the building, nobody was occupying it today, so there was no activity. We opened some doors and windows, and within a matter of minutes, we went down to a .0. So we were 0.00 with ventilation. Did the same thing on the second floor, 0.00. The basement, there's nothing we can do until we do a cleanup down there to relieve that. He didn't go down very far, but in the basement, just entering into the basement, we were over eight. So the recommendation is, is we are going to ventilate tonight, are going to seal off the stairway to the basement with some visqueen. And he will be back first thing in the morning at 8 o'clock to do another reading. He will be there throughout the day to do readings. We're confident with the ventilation that we're doing right now, and we also shut off the second floor air handler, that we can maintain that zero. And the cleanup crew is supposed to be here at 3 o'clock tomorrow. They will work throughout the night to get the cleanup done. And then a subsequent air test will be done that following on Wednesday, when, and then he will send it immediately, send it to the lab. We should know late Thursday as to, you know, whether we're all set to go. With that being said, the tentative plan right now is pending the sampling at 8 o'clock in the morning. We will be looking to have staff come back at about 10 o'clock tomorrow morning unofficially. That's what the plan is. We're confident with the ventilation and the other air handler shut off, that we'll be able to maintain that zero. And it's supposed to be a nice day tomorrow, so we're also going to ask staff, just as a precaution, to open a window. But again, the guy from IAC will be there, and he will be monitoring, walking throughout the building, and will let staff know that, that he will be checking it, and if there's any kind of an alert, he'll let us know. With the exception of the basement. The basement's a basement, and has to be dealt with. So I apologize for the inconvenience for counsel and staff and the citizens, but it was purely accidental, and we'll get it taken care of. And I'll be able to monitor City Hall with our new control system. I have a laptop that I can take home, that I can monitor the temperatures within the building. We will have, with the air handler off, we still have a baseboard heat system that functions, so we will still have heat. It's just that it's going to work a little extra hard. It's supposed to get, you know, in the 30s with some mild winds, but we'll still have heat in the building. And in lieu of that, even with the laptop, I get email alerts as well as text alerts with any issues in regards to City Hall or public safety. And it's been very beneficial, and it's saved us money. So I get, you know, I'm in the know of what's going on at City Hall and public safety. We have the same system set up at the wastewater plant, where they can save, you know, get alerts as well, should there be an issue with the new boilers that were installed there. But I get low temperature alarms, freeze alarms, all that type of stuff, and if I get those, then I'll immediately respond.
Just one other thing we got to add. Yeah, we are looking at open City Hall at 10:00. Unless things don't come out well, then I will notify all the staff and the media, and we'll put signs up on the doors again to have City Hall's closed. Because right now, that's, you know, 10:00 is 10 o'clock in the morning. The other thing is, I know, you know, certainly from a staff perspective, from myself, as the manager, we start looking at what the costing and affecting the general fund budget. This is actually an example of an incident that fits perfectly in with our brownfield remediation fund. This is contamination, and probably, I'm looking at most, if not all, costs will be, we can do, pay through the remediation fund, which means the general fund will not have a hit. We'll have to do a brownfield plan, which will be very quick and dirty. I've already asked Mike to get costs on certain things. We know we're going to have to, if they're going to build new concrete, we're going to have to replace. They have to build tonight, they're going to have to, they're done here, visqueen that wall, big barrier. So that wall, of course, and all those things will be looked at, and then put into that request for the brownfield authority, and then ultimately, I'm going to come forward. So we may have to pay the cost upfront, but in the end, we'll be able to reimburse.
And just to say it correctly, it's micrograms per cubic meter. So it's .5 is their action level, the required level, that action level is 1 microgram per cubic meter. And so we were...
The EPA level is 1.
Yep.
Great. Thank you for the update, Mike. And I certainly appreciate your response to this. So don't bear that weight. I appreciate all the communication from staff over the weekend, and things seem to be going in the right direction.
Yeah, City Fire was very helpful. Bill Fortbush and Bobby Adrian, Bobby Adrian got on the phone right away and started making calls, and it was, it was a good team effort. Everybody pitched in, and there was a lot of people that appreciated the afternoon off Friday, but that was not my intent, so.
And the CRT hazmat team also responded very quickly Friday afternoon, and I think they believe they've got a significant amount of it cleaned up, but there's still more. Is that more up there?
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Mark Hunter, 614 Eighth Street. I'd just like to make a contrast. Hundreds of pounds of mercury come out of our local industry from the burning of coal. And I think over so many years, environmentalists here in Alpena have worked to get that reduced and controlled. And here we have something that's maybe less than a teaspoon in one building. And think of the effort that is being taken for that one little drop. It's just a contrast I'd like to state tonight. And I haven't reviewed the materials, and I know it's different situations, but I would like to make sure you think about that the next time people talk about industrial pollution in our community. And I do thank the gentleman for taking responsibility. It would have been very easy to have said nothing. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is the consent agenda. A is bills to be allowed in the amount of $228,357.74, and B is the 2018 annual monitoring report from Alpena Lodging LLC. And we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Hest, Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
And Walagora?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right. Next up are, I have three proclamations this evening. I'm just going to come to the podium.
If you don't mind, just to save some traction.
Okay, first is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, whereas it's time to speak up. And whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has public health implications for every community, every community member in the City of Alpena. And whereas 1 in 3 women and 1 in 6 men will experience some form of contact sexual violence in their lifetime, according to the National Sexual Violence Resource Center. And whereas we must work together to educate our community about what can be done to prevent sexual assault and how to support survivors. And whereas staff and volunteers of anti-violence programs at Hope Shores Alliance encourage every person to speak out when witnessing acts of violence, however small. And whereas with leadership, dedication, and encouragement, there is compelling evidence that we can successfully, we can be successful in reducing sexual violence in the City of Alpena through prevention, education, increased awareness, and holding perpetrators who commit acts of violence responsible for their actions. And whereas Hope Shores Alliance strongly supports the efforts of national, state, and local partners, and every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts, including conversations about what sexual violence is, how to prevent it, how to help survivors connect with services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Walagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Alpena, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2019 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the City of Alpena, and I join advocates in communities across the country in taking action to prevent sexual violence. And this evening, we have Val Williams for Hope Shores Alliance.
Thank you.
That's so close. I should make a kiss to that. I'm not going to be nice and soft with you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next we have National Service Recognition. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges. And whereas the nation's elected leaders are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet their needs. And whereas Senior Corps participants volunteering through NEMSCA, Retired and Senior Volunteer Programs, or RSVP, address the most pressing challenges facing our communities. They provide non-emergency medical transportation, provide meals on wheels to homebound seniors, mentor students both in the classroom and after-school programs, provide companionship and services to local veterans, serve meals to individuals and families in local soup kitchens and food pantries. And whereas National Service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas Senior Corps participants serve in locations throughout northeast Michigan, bolstering the civic neighborhood and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. And whereas National Service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve, both through their direct service and by managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas National Service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayers' dollars. And whereas National Service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them for their future endeavors. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Services shares a priority with NEMSCA to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, the National Association of Counties, cities of service, and local leaders across the country for National Service Recognition Day on April 2nd, 2019. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Matthew J. Walagora, by virtue vested, by virtue vested of the authority vested in me, I'm sorry, as Mayor of the City of Alpena, do hereby proclaim April 2nd, 2019 as National Service Recognition Day, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of National Service in our community, thank those who serve, and find ways to give back to their communities. And we have, Rick Holchen is here today from NEMSCA. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a resource of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Walagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the Mayor of Alpena, do hereby proclaim April 26th, 2019 as Arbor Day, and the City of Alpena encourage all area citizens to celebrate Arbor Day in our community and support efforts to protect trees. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to promote the well-being of this and future generations.
Unless Rich wanted to get a picture. Next up is Report of Officers. First is a waiver request to Michigan Department of Treasury relative to preliminary review of underfunded status of city retiree healthcare plan.
And in a letter dated February 27th of this year, the Michigan Department of Treasury notified the city that in review of our 2018 retirement system annual report, trigger the preliminary view of underfunded status for the city's retiree healthcare plan. This has nothing to do with the pension, only healthcare. To prevent an official determination of underfunded status, the city must submit a waiver application to the department within 45 days, which will be April 12. Currently, the plan is approximately 20% funded, well below the 40% minimum threshold established by the state. This is primarily due to the city funding it for many years on a pay-as-you-go basis, budgeting just enough money to cover the city's portion of retiring healthcare premiums. And I will say, we are not the only ones who have done that for years. Many local governments have done that. And that's why there are so many that are underfunded, at least according to the state. Only in the past few years has the city begun to increase annual funding into the plan based on a percentage of the overall wages and salaries of all employees during the given fiscal year. I have prepared the waiver application, which outlines past actions taken by the city to stabilize the plan, as well as Resolution Number 2019-03, that commits the city to a set of actions that will bring the plan to 40% plus funding, along with other actions that should ensure continued funding at or above these benchmark levels. Although this will put some strain on the budget, which I can guarantee, if approved by Treasury, it will be preferable to the consequences of the plan to cease or determination of underfunded status. I have attached a copy of the completed waiver application, supporting sections from each of the five collective bargaining agreements, and the administrative benefit summary, and a spreadsheet illustrating how and by when 40% funding status will be achieved. Per the Department of Treasury, council must, by motion, approve the waiver application and accompanying plan documents. Council will also need to adopt Resolution Number 2019-03, officially committing the city to a set of actions necessary to meet the 40% threshold and maintain adequate funding within the retiree healthcare plan. The waiver application and supporting documentation will look forward to the Treasury, hopefully by tomorrow. Just a couple comments. One, to a certain extent, I believe that there's a certain amount of overkill by the state in their review of these. What they usually have said is, well, what happens if everybody retires at once? Well, that's simply not a possibility. Everybody's got different retirement timelines, there's no way everybody could or would retire at one time. The other is, I think, actually, if you hit 40%, you are probably well-funded. And you do not, 100% to me would be a waste of taxpayer money as far as where it would go, because it would be such overkill to cover what we are required to cover. And the city has taken a lot of action to over the past 10, 15 years that have either eliminated retiree healthcare for certain employees completely, or in the case of most others, they're capped, and how much the city will pay. So it's a very finite amount that we know will be responsible for. Just also, in regard to the resolution, it basically has four actions that the city will commit to. The first is that in its 2019-20 budget, funding for plan contributions, these shall be increased to at least 7%, which is actually what we're budgeting for, for this coming year. They're currently 6% in this year. And this is 7% of the total wages and salaries in the budget, and this shall, and the city shall increase this percentage at least 1% each fiscal year until it reaches 10%. Once that funding level is reached, it shall be reviewed by staff, and a report provided to City Council on the current level of funding, and a recommendation provided for council action on whether the percentage should remain at 10%, go up, or even go down, that it is continued to be at that higher level, just to ensure that we are compliant with the Act. City Council also directs the plan's actuary to perform an actuarial study of the plan on an annual basis in conformance with the reporting requirements of PA 202. That probably got us into a little trouble this year. It's generally on the health end of it, the retiree healthcare actuarial reports are done every two, three years in the past.
It's not retiree healthcare, it's every two years.
Two. And the state really wants to know what the actuaries recommending each year when we do our report. So this past year, we did not have a report. We ended up leaving it blank, and I think that probably complicated things. So what we were going to do is just simply require it to be done every year, so that we don't have that issue. And then also, the city, through its retirement board, shall review the current investment strategy of the plan and make recommendations within six months to council for its consideration. Right now, they're basically in either CDs or other, just interest-bearing and getting very little return. What a lot of communities have done, and we certainly could do, is utilize the same approaches we do for our pension, and allow broader investments that could bring back a higher return, and therefore increase the amount even more at a higher or faster rate. The, I did include a spreadsheet that I put together, and of course, it's based on certain assumptions. We know what the payroll started at, we took the percentages, we estimate, we knew the last, you know, the previous year's plus this year, what it's going to cost us in terms of premiums. And so we were able to look at the increase. Basically, by '24, '25, we'll be over 40%, assuming all these assumption on wage increases and the growth of the unfunded balance follow the patterns that are outlined, which I think are reasonable based on the story. So I think I would ask first that you approve the resolution, and then after that, make a motion to approve the waiver application and all the supporting documents.
Does anybody have any questions for Greg?
Certainly, yes. If you have any questions.
The annual actuary, we ordinarily do that every two years. Is that, is that a, where did that come from to go to an annual? Is that something that you just thought was, we think is a good idea, or is that...
Well, in the report, they asked for it, and that we have to do every year. They say, what is the actuarial recommended payment by the city? And this year, we couldn't get one, because we did not have a report. We had done one either before, and put it into that report, the very first time they asked for one, but the second time, we did not have. So we just feel it's better that we have that. Now, what this spreadsheet shows, we're not going to need that, but we are showing that we are improving. As long as we have a reasonable amount of excess contributions above those premiums, which are really the only cost, they said right now, our cost for, you know, what they invest in is minimal enough. And if we do go somewhere, if we do have somebody, let's say like PNC, without those are retirement, yes, there'd be some minor fees, but we, I've put enough cushion in those as far as premiums, that they would be able to cover those fees if we did that. If the price of this is how they could accept that, that's what we'll have to wait and see.
Okay, I move we adopt Resolution 2019-03. Second.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
And Hest?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And you don't need an approval or...
Yes, I do need a motion approving the waiver application and supporting documentation.
So moved.
Second.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
Hest?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up is the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone application for Canute Properties LLC.
The City of Alpena established the Downtown Neighborhood Enterprise Zone on October 6th, 2003. NEZ provides for the development and rehabilitation of residential housing by obtaining a certificate for a period of time that provides exemption from ad valorem property taxes collected under the General Property Tax Act. The property owner will then pay NEZ tax as determined by the assessor. On February 21st, 2019, Corey Canute, doing business as Canute Properties LLC, submitted an application for rehabilitation of an existing structure located at 109 and 111 River Street within the Downtown Neighborhood Enterprise Zone. The number of years requested for exemption is 12. The application has been reviewed by Alan Berg of Berg Assessing and Consulting, and Don Gilmet, City Building Inspector, and found it to be favorable. Under Public Act 147 of 1992, the State Tax Commission requires the governing body of the local government to approve by resolution the application for a NEZ certificate. City staff is recommending approval of Resolution 2019-04. If approved, I will forward the resolution to the State Tax Commission for review.
Any questions about Canute Properties?
No.
I have a couple of these. I move we approve Resolution 2019-04.
Second. Second.
Noah?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
Hus?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next is unfinished business. Revised Ordinance Number 19-442, prohibit use of marijuana in public places within the city of Alpena, second reading in Council Act.
Consistent with council policy, this would not be read a second time unless you desperately wish for me to read it in public. Obviously, no changes from the last reading, so.
Any discussion or questions?
No.
I move we adopt Ordinance 19-442.
Second.
Walagora?
Aye.
Hus?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
And Noah?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up is new business, the 2019 CIT Phase 1 bid recommendation.
On March 26, 2019, the city received an open bids for the 2019 Capital Improvement Plan, Phase 1. This project, this project includes replacement of the water utilities and street reconstruction on Park Place from First Avenue to Harbor Drive. Bid documents were sent to various firms and plan rooms, with two bids received as listed below. MacArthur Construction out of Hillman, and there was a $3,000 discrepancy between their AS RED, and then when we tabulated the bids, they'd made a mistake in their bid, so. The AS tabulated amount was $383,693. Elmer's Crane and Dozer out of Traverse City, $425,205.50. Funding has been established in the water and street funds for this project. The AS bid prices are below the funding levels available for this project in the water and street budget. It is my recommendation to city engineer that the project be awarded to MacArthur Construction for the AS tabulated bid unit prices totaling $383,693.
The question I have versus at the beginning of the time?
Should be, it should be started here this spring and completed before the end of the fiscal year, which would be June 30th. And we have been working with, just so I'll tell you where, we've been working with the owner of Harborside Ball, as far as access, and we're basically gonna build it, build half the street, blocking off one of their entrances, then flipping them over to use that entrance while we build the other half of the street, get it based in, and then we'll come back and top the whole thing. But we have been working with the local property owners on that.
I have the board of MacArthur Construction for Phase 1, $383,693.
Second.
Hus?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
And Walagora?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next up is some brief discussion on the new city manager hiring process. Been asked to provide a bit of a timeline of what we have in mind. Tomorrow, our HR department will post a consultant RFP, RFQ and P, request for quotes and proposals, basically the consultants that we had in our log from the last time we hired, and, and also other websites and, and I imagine the list serves and things of that nature, so we'll put that out. The due date on that to, to respond is gonna be April 24th. And then everything after that is kind of very, may, may be subject to change depending on our consultant, but we would, council would, I think, would begin the consulting selection process in May, expect to, the hire, actual hiring process to begin in June and July, conduct some interviews in late September and October, and then a selection hopefully by mid-October, and negotiate contract, and some relocation if necessary sometime mid-October, late November, with the new city manager to be on board hopefully in late November. Questions, obviously, again, that's, some of those dates are obviously subject to change, but we'll just keep communicating.